... Commissioned work session for August 21st. Please stand as Ashley will lead us in our invocation and Stephen will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for traveling mercies as we gather here tonight. We ask for your wisdom as we review information for our county tonight and we ask for your continued blessings for our residents and neighbors. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissars. That brings us established of form. We have a full slate, so we have a full form. Adoption of agenda, is there any changes to the agenda, Nikki?
No, Sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have motion and second approve, all in favor raise your right hand. All right, and that brings us to a discussion top, this comprehensive plan. And I see Mr. Todd Fortune is here, so Todd, I'm gonna let you step up front and you can take over the meeting, sir.
Thank you. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to try and finalize the survey and discuss methods of distribution. I hope I'm not getting too close to the mic here. You have, I believe, have received a draft questionnaire and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. I'll just give you a couple of few comments on it. The first, it's five pages but it's only 24 questions. The first half is really kind of meant to get a feel for who's responding to the questionnaire, get a feel for how many people actually live in a county, work in a county, own a business, own property, et cetera, and then also kind of get a feel for the age group and as far as where they live in a county. Basically, just get some demographic information from our response universe. And then we get into, in the midsection of page two, we get into more of what people would like to see in the county as far as road improvements, if you'd like to see any pet or bike paths, and residential development. You know, questions 12, 13, and 14. Let me know if I'm going too fast, by the way. And after question 14, the rest of the surveys really based on input we received from the community meeting. Now I'll give everybody a chance to catch up. And I will point that we tried to pattern this survey in a way that we could do this both hard copy and online, because we will do intend to post this survey online as well as put hard copies out in the community. But just based on the feedback we got at the community meeting, we asked questions about the different types of development, commercial and industrial, people like to see in a county, asked people to rank priorities, and I guess that's based on feedback from the community meeting. Rate Buckingham County on different aspects of the community, naming changes they'd like to see. And then we talk about asking the respondents to rank the different issues as far as future growth and development. As we get on to page four, just asking people what might cause them to leave Buckingham County. And of course, those options are based again on the community's meeting input, rescue squad response times. Questions 23 and 24, it's come to my attention that citizen felt question 24 was worded in a biased manner. That was actually not the intent, and you'll notice on both questions 23 and 24 are formatted similarly, and for both questions, we actually have an option for limited or no restrictions. If the planning commission feels that the wording in those two questions is biased, we can revisit the wording on those questions.
Well, we've had some comments that, not so much the solar farm, but they both are situated the same way, but on 24, I do know that.
Right.
I do understand what you're saying. You got the option to say limit or no restrictions.
Right.
Yeah. They might want to look at both of them. It does sort of, I can see their point. It's leading.
Right, and again, that's not the intent, but again, if the planning commission does feel there is bias, we can look at rewording those two questions.
Yes.
I do feel it's biased. I feel both of them are biased. I actually answered your questionnaire and looking at why I'm in Buckingham, and I saw restricted, and to me, it already implies that it should be restrict, both of these activities should be restricted. And then when it says restrict where it can be located, I don't know what that means. And restrict how much land, let's see, restrict how much land can be used. First one is solar power. Second one, and how much land should be used, it's like for metallic mining, the same thing. I'm not sure what is meant by whether to check that or not, because I'm not sure what it's.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand, but I'll try and answer that and see if that answers your question.
Okay.
I'll take those in reverse order. Restrict how much land can be used. Other counties, in fact, two that we're working with on other comp plans are looking at putting into their ordinances limits on how much land within their respective county can be used for solar development. Mining's not an issue in either of those counties, but solar is. So as far as restricting how much land can be used, that's what we're referring to. Do you want to see limits on how much land in your county can be used for development of that specific purpose? As far as restrict where it could be located, that's the same story. Because you have different types of zoning, you might want solar on land, say, zoned for agriculture or maybe industrial use, but you might not want it in a residential area. Just that's what we're going for there.
All right, and just, oh, Mr. Chairman. All right, and the word restricted already implies it should be restricted, and it doesn't say regulated. And if you use the word regulated in there, how should it be regulated? That's, to me, that's more open-ended.
So is there a consensus there to change the word restricted?
No, that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Well, no, I'd like to see.
I have not discussed this with anyone.
Pete, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have a similar feeling. I think restriction, I don't think, I don't think the comment, particularly as it relates to mining, I don't think anybody, we were talking about, we're talking about the conditions we'd like to put on mine. I'm kind of where Ms. Gooden is. Very much like to see somebody, I would very much like to see the wording changed so that it's not a restriction, but rather a condition.
Right. What's the consensus? I do feel, I agree with yours. I think the restricted part sort of implies that you wanted to restrict versus regulate.
So do we want to change that to regulated?
I think that would probably suffice. What's the consensus? I think just regulated.
All right. Now, I do have another question for the group. Are you, do you, would you want to bring it up?
I'm sorry, Todd.
Go ahead. I was also going to group, are you fine with the way the questions are ordered, or would you like to see the order changed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you could make this, you've got five pages. If you could some way change, squish together so that it's only, everything is only on two pages. Not two pages, the four pages.
Four pages, okay.
The four pages, so they only have to handle two sheets of paper.
I see.
Okay, and you've only got one question on that fifth page, and that, you know, three pages for that one question.
We could.
So if you could squish together.
I'll see what we can do on that. We might, you actually might be able to squish this, or condense it rather, to get it to the four pages. We'll work on that and see what we can do there. I did have another question for the group. Are there any questions that you would like to see on the survey that you're not seeing?
I have a question. You know, we talked about broadband. I'm curious to find out, is there anything specific to broadband that really relates to the cell towers? I mean, should there be something out there that describes, or that asks the people that you're looking for answers from, their opinions regarding the location, let's say, or the number of, or the kind of cell towers in order to support cell phones, not just broadband?
Pete, what do you, I mean, I call part of that. What are you asking? Do you want another question for that addressing?
Well, I see, I see questions related to broadband, and I don't know if that includes cell, cell phones, and I don't know if the people who are reading this would understand it to include both. So I think there's been a lot of questions about, you know, where these cell towers are being located, how many they're going to be located, and, you know, and their particular constructs. So I'm curious to find out whether or not there should be, again, I'm asking the group. I don't know if there should be a separate question as it relates to cell towers. I mean, it seems to me that we have three issues, actually four in the county, three besides development. One has to do with cell towers and cell communications, broadband, the other one, mining, and the other one, solar farms. I mean, those seem to be the pressing issues right now.
Yes, sure.
I'm not sure, sure it's the cell tower as opposed to the cell phone reception. And so, and saying broadband, and instead of internet and cell phone reception, those could actually, I think, be merged together, and instead of just putting broadband, put internet and cell phone reception, something like that. I don't want to make it longer. I want to be inclusive, but I don't want to make it longer.
Well, I think internet is more about access, right? That's infrastructure, whereas cell phones would be people going, being able to go out and buy it. So I think they are two separate things.
Okay.
You know, like, you know, some parts of the county can get all three, they can get the new Xfinity, they can get Firefly, or they can get Century Link, and I think those are very different than whether or not someone's cell phone picks up. That's my opinion. I mean, it's access to services that are offered in the county.
So are y'all asking for another question to address that? Because you've got it in 21, you could change the wording around, you got lack of broadband, internet, or cell service. You could address poor service there, Joyce, unless you want another question.
For 21, why would I leave Buckingham County?
What it's saying is you lack of broadband, internet, cell service, referring, inferring it's poor.
Right, but if we're linking it all together under this section, if we're linking those three under that section, why not link it under the grid?
Yeah, I think she's looking here, Johnny, in this grid, broadband.
Oh, I got you, okay.
They aren't listed separately still in that one.
So if it's linked in one place, it needs to be linked in the other place if it's separate?
Can hear, yes. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, that's a question.
If it's linked in one place, it needs to be linked in all places. If it's going to be separate, then it needs to be separate in all places.
I see what you mean. I mean, that's easy enough to fix.
Okay.
Okay, fix how? I'm sorry.
Well, just, we can combine. I mean, if you want to combine into it to just one category, is that what you're asking?
I am, I am asking, and I haven't discussed it with the commission, what do you think the people taking the survey, what are they going to understand, and how, and to make the question the easiest possible?
Mr. Chairman, I've got two concerns. Number one is the access, which we have, is spotty in the county, and I think people need to be able to voice their view on that. The second has to do with the number and the location of the cell towers. There are people who may complain about that, people who may want more in obvious locations. I'd like to see both of those questions answered.
I think the number and location of the cell towers would probably have to be a separate question. Sort of same long line as your mind, and as far as Joyce's, I can be fit in the grid.
Then, then we could make, instead of 24 questions and one question being on this third piece of paper to handle, then put those extra questions, you know, make the questionnaire longer, and go in and use that extra page for the rest. So I just want to make it easier what people are going to answer. Like I said, I took the survey myself, and I didn't finish it.
Todd, do you have a suggestion on that, making that a separate question?
We, well, I mean, we can make that a separate question. I mean, I'm going, I mean, I really need, would like to defer to the commission as far as the wording, so trying to think if I understand Mr. Kapaczynski's concern. It's, is it, is it too many cell towers we're seeing, not enough? Or is that, is that what we want to find out?
We want to find out.
Okay. And maybe what areas, if not enough, what areas people think they're needed?
Yeah, if you have, if you have demographics on this, which I think you've reached for in the first part of the survey, you know where these people are located. I'd like to know, maybe there are certain demographic areas in the county where people are just screaming for cell towers and certain others where people are saying, hey, you know, enough's enough.
Well, if we're going to add more questions, what we could do, I'm looking back at the first part where we're asking the demographics, do we want to include a question about what community you live in?
Might be helpful.
I'd be.
Would you ask, or, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Would you ask what voting district, that district?
What district?
Maybe voting district, okay.
Seven districts is what you want to do, is that what you're talking about?
I'm just asking, which, what are they going to use as where they live, as a guideline for where they live?
I know just the broadband, it's in a lot of areas in Buckingham. Everybody has it, I've heard them talk good about it, but in my area, there is no broadband, not yet. Ain't gonna get that until 2025, so, last I heard. So you probably get a bunch of no's on that one, zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, I have been talking about changes on your survey, and I do want to tell you what I do like about it.
Okay.
Okay, I like the font, and the, the font, I like the spacing, because they're not teeny tiny spaces to have to write answers in, so I like.
That's what we, we kind of went for that.
Right, I like that, so, and like, it isn't easy to read, and it looks like, oh, this is not going to take much time, but it took me a lot of time. So I do like those things with it, and I do like the areas that are covered, and I do like the flow of it. I understand the flow of it.
Very good.
So it's not just all, I have a critique for you, and here's the things that you need to change. There are some things, because down to the font, we have older people, and when you use fonts with feet on it and fancy other fonts, older people have trouble reading that, and we want this to be read by everybody.
Definitely. So we want to add a question at the beginning, well, not at the beginning, but maybe between, maybe between questions one and two about what voting district do you live in, and then add, change the wording on 23 and 24 from restricted to regulated, and then add a question 25 about cell towers. Do you feel there are too many or not enough, and if not enough, what, does your area need a cell tower?
Mr. Chairman, and this may be a question for us to decide in here as well, with Mr. Fortune's help, as Joyce pointed out, we don't want to make it terribly long, but one thing that's come up over and over again with these cases is that we can't seem to determine where it is that people want growth. I want houses, but not across the street from me. I want a business, but not in my district. So specifically for questions 14, 15, and 16, is there a way to identify those growth areas?
You know what, give me, I actually meant to include a question in here, and it looks like I may have left it out, because, let's see, I don't, yeah, I actually meant to include a question about what areas would you like to see growth, because one thing I noticed in the community meeting was that when we did the mapping exercise, we of course had the land you smet from the last comp plan, and some of the areas that we identified as growth areas from the last comp plan weren't even touched. So I did, I apologize, but I actually did mean to include a question on that about what areas would you like to see growth, so I will, I will put that in.
And will that specify what kind of growth, residential or commercial or industry?
So you want that as a separate question?
I think so, or as specifically clarifying each type of growth, residential or commercial or industrial.
Trying to think of the best way to do that. I'm not, trying to think of a way if we can condense that into one question. There may be a way if I can, I can maybe kind of list the growth, the areas that we have maybe targeted from the last comp plan for growth, and maybe say, do you want to see residential growth, commercial, industrial, mixed use, or none? I mean, would that, would that work?
It does, so a lot of our meetings here, we spend a lot of time looking at the old comp plan and where those designated growth areas are, and since we do rely on that in our own arguments a lot of time, I would like to get a good input from the county on what they, what it is they'd like to see. The math exercise at the meeting was great. I don't know how to do that on a checkbox kind of question, but.
But I can, I can come up with a question for that and add that, and we should still, I think, be within five pages. Well, three pages if you do double sided, but five pages overall, so we can add that.
Is number 10 a question that you use as a method of gathering, you know, job seekers in the county?
Not necessarily, we're just trying to get a feel for, for the response. What we would see is questions nine and 10 kind of go together, because if people, if you have a lot of respondents who are retired, they're not going to be looking for work, not, well, not necessarily going to be looking for work. That's just more part of our effort to kind of get a feel for who's responding to, to the questions.
Could we make another option in that number nine, maybe actively seeking, to try to vent some of the questions?
So combine nine and 10 into one question?
Anybody else? I'm just not sure how many people are going to be comfortable answering that as a separate question.
So is the group okay with combining those and just adding another option to nine for actively seeking?
I think so. I think it would simplify it a little bit.
Okay.
Get rid of one question.
Any other feedback on the surveys?
It was brought up in my district. Some of the folks want to add safety by, and requiring, restricting, careful permitting for re-mining and reclamation of existing abandoned toxic metal mines. So is it too late to add that to the survey?
You know, I'm, I'm serving at the pleasure of the commission, so it's really, that's the commission's call. If they want to add it, we can add that question. I mean, we're already added questions to the survey, so I don't see why not unless the commission has an objection.
So that question would deal with the reclamation of the mines?
Yeah, the reclamation of existing abandoned toxic metal mines that we have, I think, it was brought to my attention, we have maybe over 70. I didn't know it at the time, but we do have a lot.
So the question would be?
Are you in favor of?
Or, yeah, that's kind of where I was headed, are you in favor of, or should there be, I guess, regulations, or, I don't know, I don't know what's on the county's books, regulations or more regulations regarding the reclamation of existing mines, or reclamation of, I guess, abandoned mines?
Right.
And re-mining.
Is number 10 a question that you use as a method of gathering, you know, job seekers in the county?
Not necessarily, we're just trying to get a feel for, for the response, what we would see is, um, questions nine and 10 kind of go together, uh, because if people, if, if you have a lot of respondents who are retired, they're not going to be looking for work, not, well, not necessarily going to be looking for work. That's just more part of our, our effort to kind of get a feel for who's responding to, uh, to the questions.
Could we make another option in that, number nine, maybe actively seeking to try to vent some of the questions?
So combine nine and 10 into one question?
Anybody else? I'm just not sure how many people are going to be comfortable answering that as a separate question.
So is, is the group okay with combining those and just adding another option to nine for actively seeking?
I, I think so, I think it would simplify it a little bit.
Okay.
Get rid of one question.
It was brought up in my district, uh, some of the folks want to add, uh, safety by, in requiring restricted careful permitting for re-mining and reclamation of existing abandoned toxic metal mines, but, but is it too late to add that to the survey?
And I'm, I'm, I'm serving at the pleasure of the commission, so it's really, that's the commission's call, if they want to add it, we can add that question, I mean, we're already added questions to the survey, so I don't see why not unless the commission has an objection.
So that question would, uh, deal with the reclamation of the mines?
Yeah, the reclamation of existing abandoned toxic metal mines that we have, I think, it was brought to my attention, we have maybe over 70, I, I didn't know it at the time, but I, we do have a lot.
So the question would be, uh...
Are you, are you in favor of?
Or, or, yeah, that, yeah, that's kind of where I was headed, are you in favor of, or should there be, uh, I guess, regulations, or, I don't know, I don't know what's on the county's books, um, regulations or more regulations regarding the reclamation of existing mines, or reclamation of, I guess, abandoned mines?
Mm-hmm, yeah, right. And re-mining.
Anybody else have any other changes on the, on the surveys before we talk about distribution points?
Just to see what everybody likes, I know, you got on that metallic mining, and we got a lot of people just been talking about different things, um, my opinion is, how many people like it as it is today, right now, it's, it's, uh, it's on a S U P that the county has to have somebody from the state, somebody from the federal government to give them a license, and then we still have to have them go through a S U P before they can get anything like that, that's what's already on it, I'm just saying, would they like it, or do they hate that?
You're talking about as far as allowing mining to come in, is that, am I hearing you correctly?
No, it would just have the restriction that's already there, you wouldn't have to change the word mining at all, you've already got it in there. Now, you know, to me on 24, just add that other, do you like it like it already is? And then you might give a little bit of an idea what it is.
So would that not be covered by limited or no restrictions, or just, or maybe, or maybe leave existing regulations in place, is that what you're getting?
I need to leave as is, yeah.
Okay.
That would be a question.
Can we add that as an option to 24, and, yes?
It'd be fine with me, I don't, you know, I don't know if anybody else does.
Will we want to add that as an option to 23 also, or, or does that apply to solar?
Hmm, no, I don't think we get that kind of restriction though. Only thing on 23 is, right now, we've got 4,500 acres that we put down, as, that's all we want in the county to be used for solar, um, might be some changes on that coming up too, so. Could ask them, do they want to leave it like that, or do they want to make it less?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Andy, there, there's been some questions with regard to solar farming, is it relate, sorry, there's been some questions as it relates to solar farming, does it, the restriction, does, do the, does the 4,500 acres apply to all the land that's been set as, that's, that applicants have set aside, or that applicants are actually putting panels on? And I'm wondering whether or not, uh, we need to ask county members, I don't know if they're going to be, I don't want to say sophisticated enough, but I wonder if they're going to be, uh, there's going, there's enough knowledge in the county with regard to all the, we don't have a lot of experience in solar farming yet, but, uh, if we ask the question with regard to land set aside versus where the panels are actually being placed, I mean, there, there are some people that have 400 acres that only want to use 50 acres for panels.
Correct.
Which means if we put a 4,500 acre restriction in, okay, uh, we could be losing a lot of opportunity, particularly tax opportunity, if we don't put panels in the rest of that 400 acres, so, I mean, that, that could be an issue with some of the people here, it might not be, but I'm wondering whether or not that question ought to be asked.
Yeah, well, it's still, that question is still asked for the board, that's something that we're supposed to be getting ready to work on too, is whether to do it in the fenced-in area, or to do it in the total amount that's under the, uh, which, what the board says it, but, you know.
Is that something that it's, is that something that we want to bring to the county people and ask them, I mean, is it?
Oh, it's already there, it's already there, we just hadn't answered, did you? Oh, you said the county people.
Yeah, in other words, is that something that we want to ask the people in the county, or are we opening up a can of worms that, that may be resolved by the board anyway?
At one time, one time I heard there was a lot of people who didn't want no more solar in the county, so, to me, the 4,500 acres would be a, something that a lot of people want to hear, but I, I don't know.
I'm not so sure, if you try to get too specific, that you're not going to get confusion.
That's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know that that, that you're going to get any benefit out of that.
All right.
I mean, it's an excellent point, I don't disagree with that.
And we are, it, it, just for everyone's benefit, and I'm getting ahead of myself here, there, there are two sections in the plan where we are going to cover renewable energy, uh, special policy areas and goals, objectives, and strategies, and we might want to cover that then.
Okay.
But as, yeah, as far as the surveys, I'll defer to the commission on that.
I'm okay with that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in thinking back to Mr. Doryer's question, now with questions 23 and 24, and we're adding in reclaimed mines, based on what we just discussed, now I'm worried about the inconsistencies in the verbiage between 23 and 24, if we're going to start that question with, are you in favor of? So is there a way to do number 23 and 24 for, for two things here, if we list what we have, I worry that A, it's still leading, and B, it still limits us on the feedback that we get, so could we restructure the answers to be, or the question to say, are you in favor, and simplify the answers to yes, no, or yes with restrictions, and give these blank lines like we have, so people can suggest restrictions? I think it simplifies the question, rather than leading them to what we have already discussed.
Or change the word restrictions to conditions, perhaps? In other words, yes with conditions, or yes?
So the question will be like, for number 23, are you in favor of additional solar development in Buckingham County, yes, no, or yes with conditions, and then list the conditions, is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
Or give them the option to write in what they think some of the conditions could be, I think that takes away some of the bias.
That's a pretty good idea.
Reward, and number 23 and 24 be rewarded.
Then that would be also how Steve's question could be presented also, so that all three of them are written consistently, and then give us, without pigeonholing ourselves into the ideas we think we've already come up with, would give us more opportunity for feedback.
How soon, you think it's to be centered and sent back?
Well, that's actually will be my next question, because, um, given, given the number of changes we'll be making, do, do you want us to run with this, or do you want us to bring it back to you next month, uh, for review?
I think if you make the changes, I think we've agreed on everything, so I don't see a need to postpone.
Now, my only concern was just, when I come back, just to be sure, my, my, the wording I put in is agreement, but, but if, I mean, if, if you want, one option is, I could, well, I could make the tweaks and give it to Nikki, and then Nikki could, if you're comfortable with this, ask the group to sign off on it by consensus, just to kind of poll them, and that would save us time, uh, one less thing we have to do next month.
What else the commission feels about that?
Be good, works for me.
Okay, we're in favor of that, Todd.
Okay, so what I'll do then is, um, hopefully in the next seven days, get that done, get that out to you, so if we can, if we can get this finalized next week, where's my calendar? So today's the 21st, we could possibly, conceivably, because what we want to do is, we're, we're want to actually have this both digital and hard copies, um, so maybe have this by the end of next week, go live, just assume we're able to get it out on the, on the 30th, which is next Wednesday, how, how many weeks would you want this survey to be live?
What is your suggestion to get a good response?
We usually, trying to remember what we've done before, I want to say at least two to three weeks, you don't want to go too far on it, um, if, say, if we go three weeks, it goes live on the 30th, that gives people until the 20th to, to complete and return surveys, that, does the group feel like that's enough time?
What's the consensus of the group, like it's?
What was that again?
Apple time.
So what I, what I'm, what we're targeting is to, uh, get, get the changes back to you by the end of this week, and have you get your blessing, and then go live with the surveys on the 30th, which would be, uh, a week from Wednesday.
How long does it take you to process the answers?
Depends on how many surveys we get, um, because what we're going to do is, we're going to input all the response, well, with the digital responses, we can actually compile a summary report off the, off the website, because we use Survey Monkey, with, with the paper surveys, we'll have to enter those into Excel, so that will take some time. Uh, I don't think I'm going to have a summary of the survey responses back to you, but for September, but we should have survey responses back to you for October.
So that's suggesting if we get everything back, or if you get everything back by the 20th, we might, we would, by the time we have our meeting in October, we would have some sort of a summary.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I, I sort of like that timing.
And, and for September, what we are planning to do is present you draft sections one and two of the comp plan, those two sections are data intensive, they don't rely on survey responses, it's basically, the introduction talks about legal requirements for the plan, and then section two is demographic information, uh, so we don't really need the survey responses for those two sections, so we'll be okay there.
Other than the county website, where will this be posted?
The county website, I guess the county has a Facebook page, uh, we'll put it on our, our website, and anywhere else you think it should be.
Can we have a QR code generated, both for flyers around town and/or for the Farmville Herald?
I can look into that.
That's my question, how are we going to get them distributed?
Quickly, so that the results...
Well, my, my, what I had thought about doing, and I'm going to work with the county on this, because I actually do have a list of, um, suggested distribution sites, uh, and I'm, I'm going to, we're going to work with the county to get these out, what I propose to do...
I'll get another, I'll get, give me one more.
Thank you. What we did in another county, which actually worked fairly well, is we, we would put the surveys out and, uh, have an envelope for people to, can put in, they could do it one of two ways, there's a, there'll be an envelope there for them to, to deposit their completed surveys, or they could take the surveys with them and bring them back either to the county office, or they can mail them to us. And we'll have instructions on, on a, on a cover page to go with it, but, uh, that's what we're proposing, and these are suggested, uh, distribution sites, there's a lot here, um, I'll give you a chance to glance this over and see what you think, and I apologize, I, I live in Buckingham County, but some of these places, I'm not clear on whether these, some of these establishments still have changed their name or not. But to your question, we are going to look into seeing if we can get a QR code for that.
Todd, you have some extra surveys available that we could hand deliver, uh, the commissioners themselves?
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chairman?
Just scanning this, the nail shop, the cake place, and are not on there, and, um, what's the, um, the, what do you call it? What do you call it? Yeah, slot machines, you know, that place in there.
And the old gym?
In the old gym. There's a slot machine thing, so, all of those businesses, all of those businesses along that strip should be included.
I think I know what you're talking about, okay.
Game room, but it's not the videos that I would send my team to.
And I would like to caution you, we worked on, on another comp plan, we worked on, we attempted to put these out at, uh, local Dollar General stores, and I, we were told that, uh, company policy didn't allow, but we're going to try with these, with the two stores here, because they, it's entirely possible, they just didn't want to deal with it.
Still got a new Canton post office too, ain't he?
Oh, is there? Okay.
Yeah, I was just looking on here, I see you all on your deal.
Is it a chance that they could be handed out at our dump sites, people go to the dump all the time, the personnel is there, and if he does, if he only gives away 10, he's giving away 10.
True, I mean, that, I mean, that's, I mean, we, I'm not against that at all, uh, in fact, is that Lynn, who oversees the dump sites? Okay, so I could get up with Lynn, see if he's willing to have his staff do that.
Or at least put up the QR code.
Everybody goes to the dump.
Wonder if some people would like to do it on a computer instead of handwriting, they can do both.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our plans, to have it both, both ways.
Yes, Chairman?
Todd, I have a question about the Survey Monkey link.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you set it up, do you already have that link, this link established, or I've not set up the Survey Monkey, I've done, and it's just not live at this point, so that I...
No, we don't have it, we don't have it set up yet, we want, we, we didn't want to have anything, we didn't, we didn't want to, um, get anything set up yet until we kind of got the survey finalized, it's, it's easy enough to put this in Survey Monkey, uh, once we have the survey instrument finalized, so, we can do that in a day.
Okay, so when you send us the, when you send Nikki the copy to distribute to us, could you also send that, what would be the link?
Mm-hmm.
Although it's not live, and say that it'll go live on this date, so that that link could be given out to people?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and Nikki, could you please send us a text to let us know that you sent it out, like when you drop the packet, because I'm not going to check my email. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And can we also use the county system, Nikki or Jamie, to send out like an all-call that says it's available online?
Oh, good idea.
Okay, well, I believe I have some homework, uh, to do, and, um, like I said, hopefully next few days, I'll get the revised survey to you, and, um, I'll get with Nikki, and we'll work on the, uh, the distribution to the, uh, different businesses, um, we are, I, I will propose also putting an announcement in the Farmville Herald, uh, that could be a little bit tricky, if we try to list the individual sites, because when we start to put it out, we might have some sites telling us they don't want to do it, um, so, we, we need to get together and work on that, um, and we'll try and do that, uh, you know, in the coming weeks, and then for September, like I said, I'll have you draft sections one and two of the plan to review, and I'll have at least an update on the surveys, we should at least have an idea, if we're getting online surveys, we, I should be, at least be able to tell you how many we've gotten so far, if nothing else.
Can you normally find the success rate with these surveys?
It varies from county to county, we've probably had as few as 100, or as many as 250 to 300, it might, it's not, it might not sound like a lot.
It's a good sample.
Yeah, it is, it is.
What locations have you found give you your biggest feedback?
I'll be honest with you, with the, 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 it, it kind of depends, with, um, with the one comp plan we're working on now, it was, I think, online gave us our biggest response rate, whereas with the previous one, we got a lot of paper surveys at the government offices. government offices.
Do you find, when you get this limited number back, do you find that there's any, any demographic area that's more likely or less likely? I mean, we want a sample of everybody.
We, we do. We, and we do tend to get a sam, get at least every age group, but I will be honest with you, the, the responses do tend to skew from, from the older population.
The older population, okay.
So, 50 and above, basically. I mean, we get responses from younger people, but the, the majority of the, bulk of the responses do come from, say, 45, 50 or older.
Would the return come back as what happened in District One, District Two?
Well, I'm going to put a que, we're going to add a question, asking what district they live in.
Right.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we'll get any more specific than that because they may not answer.
I think you're right.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, if they tell you District One and District Two, you just put all of it together and you don't know where it comes from.
Well, we can, we can come up with a way to separate it out using, using, with the, when we tabulate the results.
Yeah, that's my thought. Had the District One act, had a District Two act.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We, we can actually kind of sort that out when we do our tab, our calcula, our tabulations, rather.
I think that'd be good, but anyway, yeah. Take more time, but.
No, you're right. It, it gives you a better feel for what the different regions want or don't want.
Exactly.
All right, thank you very much. We will, oh, we do need to go ahead and, I need to know when to be back next month. Do we have a, a date set for next month already?
Um, yes. Just let me confirm that.
It's the 18th, ain't it?
11th, 18th, 25th, let's see. September 18th will be the third Monday, that's the work session, 6:00 P. M.
Nikki, I'm going to have to check that date with my, I, I may be out of town, but it doesn't matter really. I mean, as long as you have a form here.
Okay. Very good. So, I will see you all, I'll be in touch with you about the surveys in the next few days, but I will see you all on the 18th.
Thank you, Todd, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to commission matters and concerns. Any commissioners have anything they want to speak on at this time?
I do. I stopped by, I was coming from Nelson on 60, and the convenience store that was set up that we passed on to the Board of Supervisors, that convenience store is now in operation. So, there is something out, out there, and I just stopped there just to see what it was. I saw the open light, and I was, it was, it was a good setup. So, it was something that I think that we did that was good, that was needed on that end. He hasn't gotten the gas pumps operational, um, because there was a problem with the system that, that he didn't know. And, but the store, it has been in operation since about March, and I think that was a pretty quick turnaround as far as getting something done.
Very good. Thank you, George. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to adjourn, Dan?
Go move.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All the favorizers I've had.
All right, very good. We adjourn. Thank you.